Special call meeting of Marion County Department of Education to order and I need a motion on item one A.
Can I make a motion to approve the June five tenth twenty twenty four Board meeting agenda?
It is officially filed, so I'm gonna draw this special call meeting. Marion County Department of Education to order and I need a motion on item one A. Attention, salute pledge.
Can I make a motion to approve the June five tenth twenty twenty four Board meeting agenda?
A second.
Considerable.
All in favor, say yes.
I am.
I am. I have our two's are pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, under the United States of America. And to the republic which is the greatest.
Item number three is communications and three A is public policy. Don't be too interested. Uh, three B is our superintendent report, Mr. Brady.
So what we did last summer, uh, I wanna kinda rack up the twenty-three to twenty-four school year by doing sort of a review or review of the year.
Item number three is communications and three A is public policy. Don't be too interested. Uh, three B is our superintendent report.
So this is technically still in draft, so what we did last summer, uh, I'll sort of kinda rack up the twenty-three to twenty-four school year by doing sort of a review of the year. The draft mission that we reviewed earlier in the year was to build a dedicated community focused on preparing learners for academic and career success. And the vision being Marion County Schools will ensure that every student has the skills and knowledge necessary to thrive. So briefly, just talk about a little bit of the work that went into that. So again, we partnered with S R E V the past year. Uh, we had focus groups with all of our stakeholders being involved in that to review, you know, what is the purpose of Marion County School and what did, where do we wanna go? So that was, uh, you know, the mission and vision that you see here, the draft version was the sort of culmination of all of that work. So, uh, so that, again, that'll be finalized here recently. So as, uh, we've had many, many, many approvals this past year, we're talking a lot about facilities. So, uh, I've, you all heard me say some of the most improvement and the things that make me most proud as superintendent is the significant increases and, uh, and improvements with our facility. So of course, you know, first and foremost, Marion County High School. Uh, again, I share those pictures, just wow, I mean, what, what a difference it has made with Marion County High School. So again, start with that. Continuing on, and, and this was through our insurance that, that paid for with wind damage for the dome, but you can see there that what we had prior to the, um, new rugby dome going on, so. Calvary Elementary, if you haven't been by Calvary lately, wow, what a, what a tremendous difference it has made here in just the last month. So again, you see sort of some of the beginning phases of Calvary and then there's some pictures later on. So, and that's where we are today. What a, what a difference it has made, they're actually painting, uh, the windows are in, uh, I believe the air conditioning, uh, is now on. So, uh, it truly does feel like a school now and it, uh, it, it, again, it's a beautiful facility and I can't wait to, to show it off to the public. We will have an open house just as we do with the high school, but, uh, it, again, just what a tremendous facility. Outdoor classrooms, we did that this past year, so each school with the exclusion of L E S and that's, you know, we're waiting for next steps on L E S, they will have an outdoor classroom. But, uh, all the rest of the facilities did have outdoor classrooms, Calvary's, uh, is now finished as well, so are very close to being finished. So we, again, just not a nice space for our students to enjoy learning outside. So I wanted to talk about athletics a little bit, you know, we've, uh, we've, you know, I heard some of our improvements. I've met with our, uh, coaches several times over the past year and, and we started to put together a list of what do we do as far as athletic facility improvements. And so I wanted to highlight some of the things that we have done this year with athletic facilities. So of course, this, the picture you see there on the right-hand side is the new stairs that we've included for the baseball and softball concession stands. So we, uh, they previously had wood steps that quite honestly, they just, they didn't last. I mean, that would be something that we'd have to continue to have maintenance and, and upkeep on, so we wanted something that would, that would be a nice safe set of stairs for many years to come. So we did, did have a nice, well, you see it, the metal stairs there, uh, constructed at both facilities. Um, we did just finish up putting a complete new ceiling in our fitness center, so that was part of an asbestos abatement that we did this summer. So I'm proud to say that our, to the best of my knowledge, our entire campus here is asbestos free. So, um, as part of that, we did put new ceilings in the fitness center. We did put a new H V A C unit in the football locker room this summer. Uh, a soccer, soccer practice field dirt, so you see the big pile of dirt on Patriots Drive. We actually had, uh, about three hundred loads of dirt that was excess at Calvary that was our dirt and, you know, on, as far as on our district facility plan, it does have the need for a practice field, uh, for soccer. So, uh, makes sense, we have the dirt availability, it's on our district facility plan, so it just makes sense to, and it's later on, then you'll approve a B G one, I consider approval for a B G one. But it just makes sense to take advantage of that dirt that we owned and we just needed to pay the hall bill for it. So, uh, so again, it's a significant, uh, price day, that's a differential because of, of the fact that we already own the dirt, just had to pay the hall. Uh, new fit fencing around the fitness center, so if you've been to the, uh, fitness center lately, you'll notice that all the fence that used to run down the front of it, it just was quite honestly not that inviting. Has now been moved back towards sort of in conjunction with the building and all the fronts opened up. We did have those, a couple of telephone poles removed and just trying to make that facility a lot more inviting and update that because the fencing was in terrible condition. So we did put new fence around the fitness center. We can see there on the left-hand side, we had striping for our band practice area, our band program is very thankful to have that. Uh, we did some improvements for our football and soccer fields, uh, recoding of our rugby dome floor, new flooring for our football press box, so that's, we're actually getting ready to start that this week. Uh, new flooring for, uh, our bus garage too, that's not part of the, the facility as far as athletics go, but that they're finishing that up now and then we'll move it to the press box is why I bring that up. New lights in our fitness center and our football locker room, it's for a total of two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars that we spent this past year in athletic improvements. And then to take that in conjunction with the rugby dome that, again, our insurance paid for, but that was an additional five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. So we spent, uh, again, just needed repairs and improvements, but again, pretty proud of the, the work that we've done with trying to improve some of our athletic facilities. So continuing on with other facility improvements, uh, this past, and we're still continuing to work on this, but we began the work with our brick and window replacement at Glasscocks. You remember, we talked about some, a little bit of water infiltration that we had through the previous brick, it was just beyond our life expectancy. So again, uh, the entire building will be re-brugged, uh, and it looks fantastic, that building now is like a modern, nice space for our students to learn in. Uh, we did put a new roof on L E S, a partial roof replacement that actually they, they started to work on at the area technology center. Um, we're doing some window replacement and partial roof replacement and planning stages for H V A C at Marion County Middle School. I added Knox boxes at all of our schools for safety purposes and what those are is, uh, they're a box, a very secure box that we can put a key in in the event that we had a, you know, an emergency and our, our, uh, first responders have a key to actually get into that Knox box, so it's just a, an additional safety measure. Uh, and again, thanks for our partnership with our, uh, first responders with that. Uh, working to relocate our maintenance shop, so we had the old bus garage behind Glasscock that's been an eyesore for many, many years. And it's, it's a nice building, it just needs some work. So we, uh, as part of some of the brick replacement and the roofing that we're doing, we are gonna brick that building and, and put a new roof on it. And that's when our district facility maintenance team, they will be implicated in that building, so it'd be a nice area for them to, uh, to be housed. Paid the parking lots at Marion County High School and Patriots Drive, of course, rebranded Marion County Night Academy to L, L M S. You can see our sign changes and everything that's been done this summer. Uh, and then as part of our relocation, we are gonna relocate the U C Spalding and the Marvel Academy to the A T C. And it's just gonna be a better, uh, better state, a better space for them because of the shared partnership with the guidance counselor and stuff. So I, I just think it'll help improvements in those programs. And then our, uh, Marvel, not a Marvel, our E L L and our migrant programs will be housed where the U C Spalding was before. So it'd be a nice space for those parents and those community members to come in, uh, to work with this element, this program. Continuing on with community, so several things I just wanna point out and remind you about, Marion County High School had our open house on December seventh following the completion of the renovation. And again, I just can't say enough about the positive feedback that we received from the community around that open house. So the pictures you see there, Marion County Night Academy hosted and thanks to them for hosting, that's a nice space to have it. Our, uh, community reading celebration night, so you can see some fun pictures there. Continuing on with our E L L and migrant program, they hosted a community multicultural night on March twenty-eighth, so you can see some of the pictures there. It was actually well attended, especially for it to be a, the first, first time that we've held it. Uh, and then what you see here is our annual manufacturing day where our local industries, uh, they come in and meet with students about possible career opportunities. Just wanted to point out some of the highlights with our community members, so we Kentucky Coopridge, who we greatly appreciate, made several donations this year based on supplies that the schools have requested. See some of the nice checks there, pictures of checks, that is. And then this is a more recent, uh, development, but we did receive a fifty thousand dollar grant to help pay for our twenty-three passenger V C E bus that has been ordered. So, uh, again, thanks to, uh, the W H A S Crusade for Children for that, it paid for approximately a third of the, of the bus cost. And then of course, have to bring up academics, so I, I can't say enough about how, I mean, we're not exactly where I wanna be yet, but I can't say enough about how proud I am of the improvements that academics have, have seen. I mean, to see scores increase this rapidly is quite honestly not, not heard of. And I, and I share that because I can't say enough good things about our principals, our teachers, all of our staff. I mean, we've seen increases like this because of what's called collective teacher advocacy. And what that means is just everybody working together for a common cause and that, that's exactly why you see scores go from forty-six point four to sixty-nine or forty-three point nine at Marion County Night Academy to sixty. I mean, again, you just don't see those types of results, uh, increases year over year without collective teacher advocacy. So again, thanks to our staff and our principals for the tremendous work that they've done in this area. Uh, and then continuing on there, you see all of our elementary schools, uh, are in, at least in the green. And then, uh, our high school, they're kinda small, but you can see in, uh, the increases that we saw this past year, uh, with A C T. So the, the gray bar being the year before and then the, the red bar being the current year. So continuing on, uh, with letters, uh, so what that is, is a reading, reading training program. We had fifteen teachers and three administrators to complete that, uh, with three of those teachers, or thirteen of those teachers rather, receiving a rank change. Uh, we had a new teacher academy focused on standards-driven instruction. We had over one thousand district walkthroughs completed this past year. We used some of our S R funds to adopt textbooks and to also, uh, have resources for content in great areas that needed the most support based on data. And then lastly, with some of our S R funds, we had teachers, uh, be able to submit, uh, possible things that they wanted to do in their classrooms or improvements that maybe we wouldn't otherwise do. So we used approximately seventy thousand dollars of funding to, uh, award teachers, you know, fun, uh, or, you know, things that they wouldn't typically do in the classroom. So again, lots of, lots of smiles when teachers found out that they could actually try something new and exciting and innovative. Just to highlight on human resources, uh, we continued our partnership with Campbellville University, inviting students to observe classes and share information about employment opportunities. So it is an event that, uh, we've been doing for the past two years and, and one that, uh, is well received by the students of Campbellville University. They come into our schools, they observe, they talk with our teachers, our principals, and then they come back to central office and we feed them lunch and then allow them to answer, ask questions about our district and what we have to offer. Uh, so again, just a neat partnership and a great opportunity for not only students of Campbell, School of Education in Campbellville, but, but also for Marion County Schools and possible recruitment efforts. So, um, I'm happy to say that ninety-seven point five percent, percent of our positions are currently filled across the district. Uh, and then we have over the past year increased the number of available substitute teachers and substitute instructional assistants, uh, which of course decreases the need for our teachers to cover classes. So it's our goal to never have that happen, but unfortunately with the number of subs that we've had in the past couple of years, it, it's been a need. So, uh, again, just continuing to work on those efforts. And then lastly, the three point five percent raise that you all, uh, approved for our staff for the upcoming school year. And just some other highlights, of course, you see the picture there of Mike and Stacy, our very first air-conditioned bus. And just as a reminder, we are doing, awarding those buses or giving out those buses based on seniority to the district. So I don't exactly know Mike Mopin, but I think forty, close to forty years that he is dedicated to the district. So, uh, if there's anyone who deserves an air-conditioned bus, it's Mike Mopin. So, uh, and again, we have ordered the next air-conditioned bus that will go to the person that has the second on seniority. So you can see the smiles there, they are quite happy and so are the students of, of that particular route. And then, uh, in addition with our transportation department, this summer, we have upgraded all of our radios in the district to digital radios, they're just a lot clearer. Uh, you know, I think it'll be a increase in safety as well, so it, uh, it, it will be a huge improvement. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong Scott, but I believe at the bus garage, they can now see which bus, when they radio in, it will actually show the bus number, which, which will also help in the event of an emergency. Uh, technology, we installed a hundred and seventy view sonic panels this past year, replaced two computer labs at Marion County Middle School. And I, I don't know whether call it Marion County Night Academy or Levitt Middle, but at the time it was the Night Academy. Uh, yeah, so it, uh, kinda go back and forth on that. Uh, in, implemented a new reporting system for technology issues, which has gone well. Uh, we did, uh, have twenty-four students of migrant D L L that graduated with eleven students receiving a score of four point five or higher on the access state assessment. Uh, we received fifty thousand dollars for our Farm the School grant. And then, um, we also did our, oh, Kim, your batteries are in low. I think mine is too. So we, uh, uh, Ms. Wheeler has also organized our very first Central Kentucky School Nutrition Mini Conference, so that'll be coming up very soon. For preschool, we started one hundred and four, three and four-year-olds across six preschool classrooms. And then, uh, all of the preschool teachers have completed the letters training for early childhood. So again, just some of the highlights over the past year, but, uh, again, I can't say enough about how thankful I am for the staff of this district and how everybody does embrace. Hey Ron. Six, again, just highlights. And, uh, all of the preschool teachers have completed the letter training for early childhood. So again, just some of the highlights of the past year, but, uh, again, I can't say enough.
Moving on, item three C is our attendance in the row. And for our register report, I'm happy to cite that Infinite Campus is now updated with the middle school boundaries with the addresses, so it's all aligned. Um, Ms. Farmer has been playing around, they have, uh, on either campus you can go with a sandbox.
Sandbox is, uh, it's not a live site, but it is duplicates, um, Infinite Campus and she can play around with it, um, before it goes live, just to see if there are any flaws or anything that needs to be fixed. She's been doing that today, she's gonna, uh, do a little bit tomorrow, we've been making it kids, we've had Pebbles Flintstone who has joined our district in the sandbox, so just to play around with it. Um, so hopefully that online registration would be open later this week for parents to complete, if not later this week, but on Monday for sure. Uh, generally, it does open around July first, but with all of, um, the data coming in with the addresses and trying to get those merged with I C, it's taking a little bit longer. Um, but like I said, Ms. Farmer has been spot checking the addresses to make sure the address, school boundary aligns. So far, we haven't had any issues with that. We do want that to be a seamless process for our parents as they complete the online registration. Sometimes it's a little tricky with online registrations, we want it to be as easy and flawless as possible. As far as our homeschool numbers, Ms. Holly Cox and I have been working on several students, uh, we had students who decided to go to homeschool last year, uh, because that our Marvel program was full. So we've reached out to those families, uh, to let them know, uh, specifically for them, that the Marvel application was open if they were interested in applying. Um, and we had nineteen students that's gonna be returning from homeschool to either in-person instruction or Marvel, so that was a win. Our Compass Security, uh, that is the program that was recently approved and it is, uh, through the cameras, the cameras in our buildings. So right now, I just wanna give you an update, the servers are in connection. And after they have those created, they're gonna ship them to our district and then they're gonna install them, we'll have those installed in the district. Once the servers are installed, then we will align those with our camera and import the data. So once all of that has taken place, our staff will be trained on how to use the system. Um, Mr. Deacon talked to the guy at Compass Security and he said that they would ship in about a week or so, that's what they're hoping for. Uh, this week's been a busy week, in the mornings, I've been walking through, uh, the buildings with our emergency personnel and we, we do this every year, uh, but it's a walk-through, tour of the building, make sure they're acclimated with the building, but they also know where water shut-offs are. Uh, it's a great opportunity to meet with the principal to discuss what happens in the event of an emergency, uh, so what's the protocol for each building? So each building, it, it's so neat to get to go into all the buildings because they're also diverse and different. So I feel like I'm learning just as much as they are about the buildings, but it's, it's been nice to talk about, you know, what happens during the fire alarm, what does this look like? And, and it's also an opportunity to say, hey, don't forget to call, um, the fire department, they would love to come in and watch a fire drill and be able to give feedback. So it's been great, Brian Smith has also joined us with emergency personnel, so it's, it's, it's been a great opportunity. So we've got, most of them will be finished, uh, this week and then next week we'll finish the rest of them.
Any questions from me? Brian Smith has also joined us with emergency personnel, so it's been a very opportunity, so we've got, most of them will be finished.
Busy time, we're closing up the, uh, submitting A F R to the state, which is due by July twenty-fifth, and we're, we're on our way, so we're almost ready for them to kinda wake up some stuff and the state to send us, we can finish it. Uh, looking at the month, on the revenue side, the four things I pointed out, he is, uh, it's not that big of a difference right now, but, but we're down three percent utility tax at a rough of forty-eight thousand dollars, we used to receive the June on July first, so a hundred fifty-five thousand, so what we are, we go above that, so we'll probably be more like a hundred to the good overall, I just like to know that. That will be one of those audit adjustments, be several audit adjustments, sometimes they're for the plus, sometimes for the minus, but, um, that will be a, an increase on that. Of course, the interest rate has been huge this year, so you can see that, uh, year-to-date, we're picking over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars additional on interest, just about changed in how we did that bid this time last year. Um, C was consistently three percent down, we tested it, so it's pretty flat. The ninety-three percent decrease in interfund transfers, that had to do with reminder, if you remember about this time last year, you all approved a two point six million dollar capital fund request that would move to general fund. We didn't do that this year, it's not an option, so that's why there's such a discrepancy there on the net, two, lost a two point five million. Uh, and of course, the others just kinda, a lot of that's gone on with the insurance funds that went to the money, the money don't root and things of that nature. So, uh, it's kinda, kinda skewed a little bit with the two point six million in there, it makes it look like it's a little down, but really, truly, we're, we're doing very well from here. Uh, very similar expenses, um, we are up, you can see in the athletic, in the plant operations and maintenance of twenty-six hundred, a lot of that's been put to the road dump and plus the additional athletic expenses that Mr. Brady discussed earlier. Uh, student transportation did really well this year, diesel fuel was down a whole lot, so that really, really helped overall there. And then the other one that's kinda anomaly is the, um, on the forty-two hundred land improvements of two hundred and forty-three thousand, last year, we had the, uh, Arctic Studies for Design and Renovation to eleven on each year, that we had to pay for once we closed that project out, so that's why that, that hit this time last year versus, and, and no expense this year, so that's good. So overall, uh, the unaudited in the year, I'm still thinking that eleven million dollars, so it'll, it'll change some, up or down, like I said earlier, so we did very well, like the work efficiencies, you can continue to look for. Uh, and here's the trend data for the whole year for the bigger expenses. We did very well, like the work efficiencies, you can continue to look for. Again, here's a trend figure, spending your overall loss numbers is about six hundred thousand, if that does close some. General fund money, we paid out for Glasscock, uh, they were paying about eighty-five thousand, the first, the first days of that, we paid, um, and of course, the raises were in there this year. And so overall, we're still under that budget of twenty-two, five, and we came up with twenty point three, so stay aligned with what we, what we projected it.
Any questions, Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four. Uh, item four A, I'll make this motion to consider approval of the twenty twenty-four policy update number forty-seven and procedure update number twenty-eight, excluding policy number zero nine point two two four two and procedure number seven nine. All right, moving on to item eight, uh, item four A, I'll make this motion to consider approval of the twenty twenty-four policy update number forty-seven and procedure update number forty-eight. Excluding policy number zero nine point two two four two. Item seventeen, item zero nine point two two four two.
Motion to the tree, uh, this is the year twenty-five.
Okay. Okay. That's my motion, thank you. Make your change. Any questions here?
Any other question?
All in favor?
Uh.
I need a motion on item four. Moving on to item five, we need a motion on item five.
Make a motion to consider approval of initial D Q one for Marion County High School practice soccer.
Make your changes here. You gotta know that Coach Clements and Coach Bette, uh, I. Moving on to item five, um, are very excited about this and, and are just really pleased that that's been a good thing for them and their team. So then the work from. Scheduling and just watching things, so they're, they're thrilled that this is, that this is kind of preparation. Know that Coach Clements and Coach Bette. Uh, yeah, I need a motion on item. Uh, are very excited about this and, and are just really pleased that that's been a good thing for them and their team. So then the work from. Scheduling and just watching things, so they're, they're thrilled that this is, that this is kind of preparation, so. All in favor? All in favor, I, I. Uh, actually, I have five C. Need a motion on item five D.
Do you want to consider approval of the survey architect, we can all phone up architects, county high school soccer practice.
Second, any questions here? Any questions? All in favor? All in favor, I, I. Any questions on item five C?
Consider approval of the survey of the, of the, of the pole of Marion County High School soccer practice.
Right now, the demolition, project B G twenty-four, that two, five.
All in favor? Uh, any question? Any motion on item five D? If you go by their account, it's worth so much more. And it's more of a, where you see what's in there and you don't have to worry about child, we need a building, you don't worry about demolition, nothing is great.
Project B G twenty-four, that two, five.
Yeah, any question about that? I hope we don't do a presentation. Go by their account, it's also. And it's more of a free, see what's going on, and you don't have to worry about child, we need to have the old people.
We didn't say when, we received money fairly, that's why we need that space for state.
All in favor? Just to do something. Open, team, open, meaningful.
I would like to consider approval of pay out.
We didn't say when, we received money fairly, that's why we need that space for state.
Two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and eight cents for work performance. And sixty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents. I would like to consider approval of pay out. Calway Elementary School, we received a prize in the name of David, two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and eight cents. For work performance. And sixty-one thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and forty-five cents to vendors from materials on the East Calway Elementary School. BG number twenty-two dash four five two.
Any questions here?
Yeah, so, on the second floor, Calvary, I was mentioning, it's just that space that all our HBCU water heaters and just mechanical rooms, and we had the opportunity to take six thousand dollar credit for not painting that area. I mean, there's really, it's just a mechanical room. So we missed one, we put six thousand dollars credit on that. And then there was eight thousand two thousand eight hundred dollars in water heat, that was part of this. Water heaters just became tenacious rooms. So we had the opportunity to take six thousand dollar credit for not painting that area. I mean, there's really, it's just a mechanical room, so.
All in favor?
This one, we had six thousand dollar credit for that. And then there was eight thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and nine cents that was part of this to remediate natural.
Forty-two thousand one hundred seventy dollars to vendors.
You have a motion on item five G?
Second. Tremendous improvement this has made. I've been looking at Ms. Farmer's smile back there, you can actually see out the windows. So I teased Ms. Farmer last week, I was in Marion Middle, and I told her her future was so bright, she had to wear shades because all the sunlight's coming in through windows that you can actually see. It has made a tremendous difference. I've been looking at Ms. Farmer's smile back there, you can actually see out the windows. So I teased Ms. Farmer last week, I was in Marion Middle, and I told her her future was so bright, she had to wear shades because all the sunlight's coming in through windows that you can actually see. It, it has made a tremendous difference.
Harsh on window placing replacement.
Any questions?
BG twenty-four dash one two.
All in favor? Need a motion on item five, any questions?
Make a motion to consider approval of pay out.
Need a motion on item five, I. I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay out. Number one, two, three, LLC in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for works performed on Marion County High School. Partial roof replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one one. Any questions? Okay. All in favor? I. Need a motion on item five, I. Need a motion on item five. I'll make a motion to consider approval of pay out. Number one, two, three, LLC in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for works performed on Marion County High School. Partial roof replacement, BG number twenty-four dash one one. Area technical, partial roof replacement, BG twenty-five, twenty-five, one one. Need a motion on item five G? Make a motion to consider. All in favor? Need a motion on item five K?
Move to consider approval of pay out number five, the hair construction LLC in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The work performed on Marion County outdoor classroom. BG number twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Need a motion on item five K?
Move to consider approval of pay out number five, the hair construction LLC in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The work performed on Marion County outdoor classroom. BG number twenty-three dash three two.
Need a motion on item five L? Make a motion to consider approval of CMTA letter.
This is for Calvary, so we, we weren't able to shut them at the same time as the rest, just needed to shut some Calvary. Yeah, so this is the letter intended to, for Marion County.
Make a motion to consider approval of CMTA letter.
This, this isn't co-op, so just all their A's, and we just utilize it with the co-op process.
Other questions, Mr. Brady, want to talk about?
Yeah, so this is the letter intended to, for Marion County Middle School HVAC.
Make a motion to consider acceptance of C.
Scott. It's just, this isn't co-op, so just all their A's, and we just utilize it with the co-op process.
All in favor? Other question? Five? All in a motion on item five? Need a motion on item five?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the award of C.
Consider acceptance of C.
The CPS capay to C.
Calvary Elementary Cafeteria attachment.
One hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and forty-four cents.
All in favor? I. Any questions? Need a motion on item five?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the award of C. I could bid.
Make a motion to consider approval of artists or surplus auction. Ation number three.
One hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and forty-four cents.
I knew it was in parking lots, we should keep.
They are.
All in favor? Um, need a motion on item five?
That is an auction.
It's private. Idiots. Five quid, I'm private. I was saying, that stuff was housed with the, with the building behind Glasscock, on our reserve, so.
It is interesting.
It's private. It really is, idiots. Five quid, I'm private. I was the last one, was housed with the building behind Glasscock, on our reserve.
All in favor? Uh, item five, the acknowledgement of field. I'm so glad because I could.
Stupid money, that's poor consent, I was paying.
All in favor? Uh, item five B is acknowledgement of field, so acknowledged. We're thinking, I have Mr. Schwartz's donation of thirty-six hundred fifty dollars for the CSH Soft Play Field. And he's bringing, bringing more banners. I know that, you know, Mr. Schwartz is a generous member of our community, he's done a lot of projects, we sincerely appreciate all of it. Moving on to the, um, especially our athletics and athletics, he's so really supportive of those kids. So I'm very grateful to him, we are, make a motion for a second. Preliminary discussion, season tenants for politics. We sincerely appreciate all of it. Moving on to the, um, especially our athletics and athletics, he's so really supportive of those kids. So I'm very grateful to him, we are, make a motion for a second. Preliminary discussion, season tenants for politics. Moving on to item setting, acknowledging of personnel actions, so acknowledged. Meeting, item. Close session, KRS, one, I think it's a dog, I, I, preliminary discussion, season tenants for politics. All in favor? KRS.